Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. This is Tuesday, June 26, 2018. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:06. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present, thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilwoman Allott, please.
Invocation.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, invocation. Mr. Majors?
Well, first, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for the firefighters that were injured in the fire on Hamlet Street, as well as the individual who rode the safer Greyhound to her, Ms. Jacqueline Brown, who, why, excuse me, Ms. Jacqueline Black, or right, Jacqueline Black, who lost her life in that fire, as well as Ms. Taylor Cashay Chow, who was Harris, former Harrisburg resident, who was riding a bike on the road, and was family of all three twenty-two, so just like a moment of silence, and remember the families, keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Allott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. Moving on to communications, this evening, we have a presentation from Community Policing Coordinator Blake Lynch. Mr. Lynch?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, good evening, members of council. Thank you so much for your time, and we're very excited from the Police Department and Community Policing Team to present this update for you, exactly what the community policing platoon and my job, as well as my partner Corporal Hammers is. The police commissioner is with me this evening as well, and just have a quick PowerPoint presentation, and also just to present also some of the events that are taking place this summer that we're happy to announce as well. So with the community policing unit, also known as CPU, that unit is headed by Corporal Josh Hammer, obviously under the direction of Commissioner Carter and myself, and the major focus of community policing is to really build trust in the community. You'll see myself and Corporal Hammer there, as well as, we have five officers that have been assigned to this unit, those are four there, they are patrol, former patrol officers who have been reassigned to this unit as part of a grant. We work closely with neighborhood watch associations throughout the city, we're working to actively become more involved with our youth throughout the city, and that's through an increased use of social media, building media relations, and also working to recruit more officers that really reflect the community in which we live and that look like us. We're meeting with neighbors and residents throughout the city, talking and connecting with youth, doing business checks and walking patrols, working with community of religious leaders in different parts of the city. We are really assisting with quality of life issues, that's the big focus of this unit, is to focus on quality of life issues, issues that are very important to our residents. However, we work with the triage system of calls, and I know that members of council understand this, but quality of life issues at times may not get that same priority at times, and our unit is able to assist with that, the unit headed by Corporal Hammer, and always being present, approachable, friendly, as I said, walking the beat in certain communities, doing details in certain areas as well. So our officers have been out already, there's a picture of two of our officers out playing basketball on fourth and, that is fourth and McClay, I believe, and attending meetings, actually after this, I have a friends in Midtown meeting that I'll be going to, and we're engaging, answering questions and concerns, people have been providing information to our unit that have been assisting with crimes to Corporal Hammer, and we've been able to follow up on those tips and leads as well. We've been in the schools, which has been great, we've hit every single school before let out for the summer. We also were at Harrisburg High School several times, the officers about three times, myself eight times. One of the principals at Harrisburg High was actually a former principal of mine, a Susquehanna Township. Dr. Love has been amazing, as you may know, as well as the principal at Cougar Academy. So we've been in there with our K-9 units, just meeting and greeting, being at Downey, that picture's at Downey Elementary, and the kids have received us with open arms, so have the teachers and the principals. So we're working to try and again engage, encourage with our junior cadet program, and we're working with many others at the high school. So one of the events that we're working on is National Night Out, which we're very excited about, this is the first time that we are hosting National Night Out as a department and putting it on in new neighborhoods throughout the city, I've done it for years, but we're looking to try and bring everyone together. So on August 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at Sunshine Park, law enforcement from throughout the city, as well as the region, will be joining the Harrisburg City Police Department, fire, and other emergency personnel will be there, the city of Harrisburg, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, ourselves, many others, community organizations, some of them sitting in this room, nonprofits, corporate partners, and other elected officials will also be there, having a table, having a presence, meeting the kids, playing games, having fun, free food, drinks, games, and more, and happy to report, and the commissioner is very happy as well, that zero dollars have been spent thus far, all through donations from many community leaders and partners, so we appreciate everyone who is taking place in that. We're also working on block side barbecue events, so we're working with numerous community leaders, and what this is, is a new event with various dates throughout the city and locations, so what we're doing is, we're taking our community policing platoon, we're going out into different parts of the city, working with different neighbors and neighborhood groups and neighborhood watches, and we're bringing out a grill, we're bringing out food, and then those people, those block captains or other churches or nonprofits are responsible for bringing the people out, and we're doing that. We have several grills that are, we're able to utilize throughout the city, part of Parks and Recreation, POW, many others that we have access to, so we're hitching up the grill to some of our trucks, we're taking the officers with us, part of his team, as well as supervisors who are able for that day, and we're cooking out, we're having hot dogs on the grill, we're throwing burgers on the grill, we're gonna have waters, and all in an effort to really work with the residents in those communities. This is the first one, it's gonna be on July 11th, and it's gonna be at 19th and Foster, we're working with the organization Bro To Go, and helping to support that, and they are going to be bringing people together in that particular area, of course, member of councils are invited, and I'll provide that to Kurt, so you have that. We're also going to 19th and Zarke, we're also going out to Lennox Street, we're also going out to, in Shypoke, so the dates are on the calendar, if you have more dates or other neighborhoods that you would like to suggest, please feel free to email or contact me, happy to put it together as well. So I do have information regarding National Night Out and flyers, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, myself or the commissioner. Thank you for your time.
Now, your other block side barbecues, you said you have a list of individuals or a captain?
Yes, we do, we have.
Okay, so do you have those dates?
Yes, I do, they're upstairs, I'm happy to email us to you.
Make sure, okay, and email us to you.
Yes, Madam President.
Anyone else have any questions? I know you do. Go ahead, yes.
Do we have any update in regards, kind of we mentioned the Junior Academy, which we're trying to push through to school, but do we have any update as far as the money we put to our CBG in regards to the actual cadet academy?
I have no date for you, you know, I'll probably send you something, email to let you know everything that is going on right now.
And then, I have another second question, I think it would be nice, I said this, I have two more questions, so I said this to Deputy Chief Moody about possibly, I don't know if we can get almost like a formal introduction of that unit, I think it's very significant for people to kind of see who they are, and kind of have an idea of like, hey, this is like our unit, these are the people representing that unit, so they're a little bit more of that base for department as far as community policing as well, so I don't know how we can kind of formally do that.
That's the purpose of the cookouts.
Okay.
July 11th, so we can introduce the whole unit to everybody, so they can know.
Yeah, but I think from that standpoint, only probably be introduced to the people who attend the cookouts, you see what I'm saying, but I think they represent like the entire city regardless of kind of saying like, this is like the model we're moving towards. I know a lot of people have asked questions like, hey, do we have like a community policing unit? They always knew it, you know, whether it was from Dave and now transitioning to Blake, that we had like a community policing person, but I don't think people realized that, we have kind of moved towards that model that we were looking to go towards, which was that unit aspect of it, so I think it would be kind of neat thing to kind of expose, I mean, people hear me talk about it now as the exposure itself, but actually putting like, you know, almost getting the face to what that unit looks like, and it's just an idea, you know, saying that, but. And then the second thing is too, I think one thing, as far as even in regards to the concentration on quality of life, I think what is helpful too is to kind of circle around on certain follow-ups in regards to maybe certain, I would say certain traumatizing thing that may happen within the neighborhood, that necessarily the actual officers responding may not have the time to kind of really spend the time to kind of assess like the neighborhood after something happened. So say for instance, like there is a, you know, a shots fired call, you see what I'm saying, where, you know, typical officer, they arrive, they, you know, kind of canvass the scene, pick up any shell casings, you know, have brief conversation with neighbor and kind of, you know, gather materials, the calls keep going, but kind of really going back and, you know, kind of really pinpoint to make sure we can get those officers to those neighbors and kind of say like, hey, you know, realize something happened here, we're trying to make sure everything, almost like decompress like what happened, because I think a lot of times when those different things happen within those neighborhoods, a lot of times those neighbors are left, left to their own to kind of figure it out unless they're really vocal, or a really strong community where they kind of come out and kind of voice their concerns, but I think there's a lot of communities that kind of tend to themselves where I think kind of just tracking, you know, where certain incidents happen, and kind of using our, our community policing unit to kind of go in there and kind of see if there's neighbors who want to talk, some neighbors don't want to talk, but I think it'll be interesting kind of like follow up.
Sure.
And I can actually say that we are in the process of doing that, in the short time I've been on, it's been a very welcome experience from a lot of residents, a lot of business owners, a lot of schools, and I've got the opportunity to meet a lot of people, community leaders in Midtown, and like I said, in Chestnut Street, Zarke, Shypoke, and I have a full Excel spreadsheet of everyone that I try to meet, and those people who are leaders in that area, I'll give an example of that particular area like Zarke or Chestnut, and had, there are many people up there who are quite vocal, some people that you may know as well, and I've spoken to them, they reach out to me, I reach out to them, and then they pass it on to those other residents, and we've gone out to follow up the walking patrols, they've done, the officers have done details in those areas as well, so anytime those calls come in or emails are received by Corporal Hammer or passed along, we actually do track those, and we're happy to try and work a little bit more with council, especially in the different areas in which you may live, so you're able to see the officers also.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Madsen, do you have any questions?
Sure. How has participation been at the events that you've had, if you had to get an estimate of how many people show up, how many come?
These are the first, this is the first event that we're gonna host, National Night Out.
Okay.
The major event, this is the first block side barbecue event that we're hosting, so we're, we're looking forward for a great response, just from going out and meeting neighbors in their particular neighborhoods in the evening, I'll give you an example, on Lennox Street, there are about fifteen neighbors over there, ready and waiting to go, to have the conversation, talk about different things that are happening in their area, whether it's animal control or different things like that, and having those issues addressed, and then trying to follow up with them and provide the resources in which they need. So engagement's been great.
Good. What's the feedback you've been getting, what have been a lot of the concerns, would you say? Sure, it varies, but I guess what's the most common you've heard?
Most common, I think, is communication, and that's something I've shared with the commissioner as well, is communication and follow-up, something that Mr. Johnson also mentioned as well, and that's something in which we're working to engage and try to build those relationships, and so when things do occur in particular neighborhoods, we're able to follow up and actually have a type of presence there, so people do not feel forgotten.
And then when it comes to promoting the events, how are you doing that, are you just, social media, are you putting flyers, or how's that work?
We're doing flyers, social media, email blasts, traditional media as well, and partnerships. So for our events coming up, we have strategic partnerships with different media outlets who are willing and able and ready to assist in promoting the good things that Harrisburg has to offer, obviously complimentary, because better partnerships are needed between our officers and the community, so we can really work to engage them, so they're all, everyone's all in.
Okay, I will be asking you for some flyers, and I will be taking them with me.
Here for you.
Throughout my travels in the community.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Ms. Green?
No, I don't have any questions, I'd like to say thank you, the one question I had was about outreach, how are we getting the information about the events out, but I'd like to say thank you for initiating these events, and I look forward to seeing more of them in the future.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Majors?
No, no questions, but I've had an opportunity to see Mr. Lynch in action at a few community meetings, and he's been doing a good job of receiving the concerns of the community, and sure, the follow-ups happen as well, so just thank you, and I look forward to attending the events and having more throughout the city.
Mr. Allott?
Likewise, no questions, you and I've had a chance to sit down and talk, so I look forward to what's happening and what we'll continue to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Orange, you and I met, and we talked about these different events that you're having, and I'm so glad that we have someone else to throw the problems off to instead of coming to me all the time, thank you, and please don't ask for any money like the chief. I just had to throw that in there, chief, but thank you, and I will be in attendance July 11th at your first barbecue.
Look forward to having you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, council.
Okay, we're moving on, Mr. Allott has a statement that he'd like to make, before we do courtesy of the floor.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute and openly address the mayor's statements regarding the declared fiscal crisis. In my opinion, the PR offensive that was initiated on his part was irresponsible in light of, I think, what the actual story is and what's actually going on. We've been talking collectively for as long as I've been on council about the need for legislative change at the state, we've spoken about the challenges of leaving Act 47 and the burden of losing our taxing authority, and we've continued to have conversations about the need for the city to identify ways to increase the revenues. None of these are new concepts, and they've been part of ongoing discussions, and have always been, remained a key point in discussing the city's ongoing recovery. What concerns me is, I think, what has been the latest of what I would call an alarmist attitude, and also, truthfully too, I think that the exchanges in the media were less than professional between the mayor and the House Speaker on both sides, I think that that, the lack of civil discourse never leads to positive outcomes. I think that the, it's also caused some great confusion among the residents, and I think that's problematic, and certainly not in line with, I think, where we've been trying to go as a city and as a community. I also think the exchanges between the two really did cost the ability for the provisions to be included in the fiscal code. Mayor, I know you and I don't agree on this, I know you said me speaking to the press, calling your efforts alarmist wasn't helpful, but I can say the same thing back, I think that you don't, you do not need to cause unnecessary alarm right now with our residents, and we do not need any more created tension between the state and the city at this point. I want to make everyone aware and remind everybody, as I've often done before, that we are co-equal branches of government in the city, and as such, city council does not need to check with the mayor back and forth in terms of the communications that we have with the media and the community at large. I will say this, I remain personally committed to finding a solution, and will continue to have conversations with members of the legislature, and have discussions on how we can ensure our successful exit from Act 47. I've spent time over the last few days reminding legislature I'm here, I've worked with members of the legislature, I will continue to do so, but I implore all of us at all levels, whether it be us on council, the mayor's office, our controller, our treasurer, our county commissioners, the representatives that we have representing us in the state house, not just in the city, but in the south central PA region, that we, this is something that we have to work together on, we do not have a choice but to come together and work together to help ensure the sustainability of our city. I'll close with saying that good government, which I know some people think is an oxymoron today, but good government requires us to work together, whether we are Republicans, Democrats, or everything in between, good government requires us to work together and come to the table, and I remain very committed to doing just that, and doing so in a civil and hopefully productive way. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Allott, thank you. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, I will now open up to my right, if anyone would like to come to the mic, please do so now, thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Michael Cuddagnoa Pickens, I am here representing the Pennsylvania Council of Churches, and also several coalitions that have been working on the Berks County Residential Center, which as you know is an immigrant detention center that is outside of Reading. As we all know that these are very tense.
Before you start, what is your address, please?
My address is 1523 Dairy Street.
Okay, thank you very much, sir, we need that for the record.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is my first time here, so thank you.
That's okay, that's okay, go ahead, please.
As we all know that these are very tense times when it comes to the conversation around immigration, and of course, we have the recent executive order around family separation, and a lot of Pennsylvanians don't know that we have this center in our own backyard, where families aren't being separated, but they're being detained, and we have so many that have come out and spoken out against children specifically being detained, and even if it's with their families, and I am proud to say that the Philadelphia City Council wrote a resolution asking Governor Wolf to issue an emergency removal order and to immediately close the Berks County Residential Center, which I would just like to read the first sentence of that resolution, if that's okay. It says, "Affirming that the imprisonment and prolonged detention of asylum-seeking children and families is inhumane and counter to international law and calling on Governor Wolf and the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services to issue an emergency removal order and immediately close the Berks County Residential Center." Whereas, and I'll just read the first point, "The Berks Detention Facility is located about seventy miles northwest of Philadelphia in Leesport, Pennsylvania, and is one of only three family immigration detention centers in the country contracted by the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement to imprison children and, excuse me, and families." And so I am asking as a leader of the faith community, and representing many faith communities, and also these coalitions, shut down Berks Coalition, I'm asking, and as a proud resident of this city, that this council consider issuing a resolution as well for Governor Wolf to issue an emergency removal order that Berks County Detention Center be shut down.
Thank you, sir, and we certainly will, if you would give your information to Mr. Petrowski at the end of the meeting, I certainly will agree to meet with you sometime next week to consider that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else to my right, please?
Greetings, honorable members of Harrisburg City Council, my name is Kaldean Rashid, and I live at 518 Calca Street here in Harrisburg. I'm a community activist and advocate for the homeless, citizens code inspector with the city, and a member of the Poor People's Campaign Movement, I need my glasses. The first topic is the Recovery House Project in the 1600 block of North Fifth Street. This is a building being rehabbed under Pastor A.J. Brawley of Second Baptist Church of Foster Street in downtown Harrisburg. After all these years, at least seven years of grant applications, lost money receives another red tape, the project has finally taken off, and the building is starting to finally look like something, but before you smile and pat yourselves on the back, there is an issue which needs to be addressed, and that issue is this. Past and present administrations gave out grant money to a building project designed to have people living in it. There are two significant problems I have with that. The first one is that there is no sewage line for that building, there is also no record of a sewage line ever being there. That being said, a new sewage line should be put in and the cost absorbed by the city. Since some grant applications were granted and some were denied to Pastor Brawley, it kind of looks like a flip of the coin will decide this, heads I win or tails you lose, but the bottom line is, however, that a sewage line must be put in, and the bill for it, in my opinion, should go to the city, because they're a charitable organization, excuse me, and nonprofit, but the sewage line from the building to the street should be at the cost of the church. The other issue then is this, years ago, when Pastor Brawley received his first grant from the city, he stood here before the former Linda Thompson administration of city council members, and assured everyone that his program would include city residents. After there was discussion that his recovery program was designed to bring in out-of-towners from various state penitentiaries, housing men and women, I asked that this program be monitored so that he keeps his word to include locals. Next, I am happy to report an increase in employment of the homeless. This fact comes as a direct result of Pastor Scott Minnick's Self-Sufficiency Initiative at the Salvation Army at 1122 Green Street in Midtown Harrisburg, and the downtown deli bread drop-in center, computers and computer classes being held in the facility. Pastor Scott's job sheets have been really making a difference in the way the homeless look at employment agencies and temp services, describing in detail what companies are looking for and how to get in, minimizing a waste of time. Candidates are then able to take this bundle of information to the drop-in center and work online on applications and talk to potential employers in an atmosphere of their peers. This is not to take away from the many other resources that are also available, more this year than a year before already have gotten their own rooms somewhere or better. The names of the many staff members involved are too numerous to mention, but I will mention Kathy, Matt, Jackson, and Ms. Chris to name a few, and of course, the new weekday cook Sharon, and weekend cook Ms. Hodge, who worked the downtown deli bread. Operation Get Paid is making a difference in this great city of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. On Monday, June 25th, 2018, at 11:00 a.m., the federal courthouse groundbreaking ceremony was held at 6th and Riley Streets. Many of the homeless of Harrisburg attempted to enter the gates to also enjoy the ceremony, but were told they could not enter because the event was open only for those who received an invitation. The homeless and other residents of the neighborhood were also turned away. The community was insulted that it was not open to the public, especially since it involves all of our federal tax dollars. Deeper still is the insult that the construction crews are coming in from Atlanta, Georgia, and other places, that our own local talent has not been given a shot at employment at this nineteen-month project. Union and non-union positions should be made available. I'm talking about millions upon millions of dollars in wages being given to outsiders, and this is an outrage, and there's more going on than this. Once the project is completed, lawyers in it will be making at least $65,000 a year, and the secretaries alone making thirty-nine. The real question is, whose property uptown are they gonna take next?
Okay, sir, would you kind of bring this to an end, please?
Capital Area Transit's new executive director, Richard Farr, appeared before Harrisburg City Council in May of this year, 2018, claiming CAT will end the year with a $700,000 deficit, and can't explain why or how it got this far in the red with no foreseeable way out, stating also that CAT buses leave customers stranded every day due to driver shortages. Someone representing the Teamsters Union should have been here too. In my opinion, this and more was said to brace ourselves for a bankruptcy filing attempt. If the problem is that bad, they should be doing a forensic audit. The audit should be done by an independent third party, like when Dave Unkelfich was the city receiver and uncovered a goldmine of corruption.
Okay, sir, if there's additional information, you may want to share it with us through our city clerk, sir, we have to give everyone else an opportunity to speak as well.
I was under the understanding that we didn't have a limitation anymore.
Well, we don't, but you've been, you've.
But no one else over here wants to go.
There's a lot of people here, there's people over to your left, so if you would like to discuss anything else, we would welcome you to be after the meeting.
There's a lot to discuss.
Okay, sir, I- Okay, sir, I will welcome you after the meeting to speak with you, or make an appointment with my staff to meet with you Monday or Tuesday of next week. I'm opening up an opportunity for you to discuss any issues that you may have.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my right, please? Anyone in the middle, please? Anyone to my left? Okay, thank you. Moving on to proof of minutes. Proof of the legislative session minutes of June 12, 2018. Council members, any admissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing done. Minutes are standard approved. Moving on to reports of committees. Report from Chair Majors on the work session of June 19, 2018, and June 20 of 2018. Mr. Majors, are you ready with your report?
Yes, Council President.
Thank you.
On June 19, 2018, Public Works Committee held two meetings as a part of our council work sessions to discuss the following pieces of legislation. Bill 4, 2018, the ordinance amending Part 5, Title II of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Harrisburg, entitled Empire Level Advisory Council. During that discussion, we looked at the reorganization of the council currently and its iteration of the five members we were discussing, taking the membership from five to seven, as well as the ordinance currently-- the bill, as it's currently drafted, would have the city council make all of the appointments. There was discussion with the administration about appointment powers and whether or not the city council said that it would have all seven appointments or that it was split between council and the administration. During that time--
There was discussion about council having four, city council and the mayor's office having three, or vice versa, the mayor and the administration having four appointments, and council would have three appointments to the EAC. Right now, we are currently-- after the meeting, there were some additional conversations, and additional information is needed before we should-- we can move forward on this bill. So I'm going to respectfully ask that we table this during our council legislative session, so we can get those answers prior to moving forward on a vote on the EAC. The next resolution was Resolution 52, 2018, a resolution ratifying the submission of a 902 recycling grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Economic-- excuse me, Environmental Protection for the purpose of funding equipment to support the city of Harrisburg's expanding recycling program. We heard from our sustainability coordinator that the administration is seeking a $300,000 grant from DEP for a recycling truck, a packer, a 12-inch tow-behind chipper, as well as additional recycling glass bins to support our pilot program of our glass recycling program. And I would ask that council look to support this resolution. The next resolution was Resolution 57 of 2018, a resolution affirming the city of Harrisburg's participation in the Sustainable PA Community Certification Program. Again, we heard from our sustainability coordinator about this program. It doesn't cost us anything. We're just looking to make improvements so that-- and this will ultimately help us as we look to apply for grants and participate in municipal programs in the future. And I would ask for council support on this resolution. Next was Resolution 58 of 2018, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Chris Dawson, architect, to provide architectural services for master planning, as well as ADA accessibility upgrades and other renovations to the doctor-- excuse me, to the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, Junior Government Center. So that, we had-- we postponed the first meeting and had to wait till the second meeting to hear from Mr. Dawson, as well as our city engineer, Wayne Martin. Council's questions were answered. And for that, there is a not-to-exceed amount of $185,800 on providing these services for upgrades to our government center in the city of Harrisburg. And I would support-- ask our council members to support moving forward on this resolution. Two more, I apologize. Resolution 59, a resolution authorizing the execution of a federal aid reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the acceptance of the Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, funding for the Hur Street Pedestrian Access Route Project. In 2016, council approved moving forward on our Hur Street project to upgrade and make ADA required-- make ADA upgrades to Hur Street between Cameron and Fifteenth Street. This is just an opportunity for us to get reimbursed for those upgrades that were-- that are currently in progress. And I would ask for council to support Resolution 59. Lastly, was Resolution 61, a resolution to enter into a master services agreement with Barton and Lagudas Engineering for engineering, technical assistance, and consulting services for various projects supporting the Department of Public Works. We heard from our Public Works Director about this agreement. There's a not-to-exceed amount of $37,000. This is professional services. So during the Strong Plan, funding was provided from DCD for the city of Harrisburg to have professional services agreements and to get some assistance with upgrades that we're looking to do at our public works facility, as well as just provide them with some additional expertise on certain programs. So this funding is a not-to-exceed amount, and it's supposed to cover calendar years 2018 and 2019. As we're still making our transition, we still need some additional services. These are usually-- they're provided maybe once a month as-- at our public works meetings. And I would ask for council to support Resolution 61. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on, before I do that-- are you okay, Mr. Johnson? Would you like some water? Would you like some water? Okay, you're okay? Okay, I want to make sure you're all right. Okay, moving on from-- with reports committees. Report from Chair Wims on the work session of June 19, 2018. Mr. David Madison, who is the Chair for Community Economic Development, was not present, so I chaired his meeting for him. The Community Economic Development Committee had three pieces of legislation to discuss at the city council work session on June 19, 2018. The first committee business was Bill 9 of 2018. It was a zoning code amendment submitted by Harris Town Development Corporation for density restrictions to revise minimum density calculations for the residential, which is LM, low-density, and residential medium-density for RM districts, and to rescind the maximum lot area calculations for commercial neighborhood districts, which is CN. The applicants, in their discussion with the Planning Commission, stated that the regulation made it impossible to have affordable housing in large buildings and our small lots during the redevelopment. With the requirement for 5,000 square feet or more to meet regulations, the applicant would not be able to provide for more units. By revising, the density would be beneficial to the developer. It would provide more units, such as one-unit studios, and make it much more marketable and increase the value of the building. I would be agreeable to this exchange as long as there is a percentage of units set aside for low income and cannot be constructed any different from other units in the building. Developers should be willing to give back to this community, when especially in their application, it emphasizes that the regulation to date makes it impossible to have affordable housing, and will be benefit-- and they will benefit from this density change. I'm asking for an amendment to this bill with the inclusion of a low-income percentage of 5%. And I am very much aware of your participation in a housing study with the city of Harrisburg, but I do not want to wait on a study. So I would ask my council members to please consider doing an amendment with the inclusion of a low-income percentage of 5%. Moving on to the next business. It's Resolution 67 of 2018. And that resolution is, "A Resolution Authorizing the City of Harrisburg to Enter into an Easement Agreement with Low Trace Cabanos Incorporated for the Purpose of Installing a fire escape connecting the rear second floor of 540 Ray Street to the public right-of-way sidewalk on Canoye Street." The owner, Dr. Jose Manjón, would like to construct a fire escape for safe access to the public sidewalk from his second-floor restaurant, and is requesting an agreement to install this escape from the city of Harrisburg. The Harrisburg Planning Commission recommends the approval with certain conditions. Number one, that Dr. Manjón contact PPNL to confirm the proposed stairway will not encroach upon the power lines. Number two, the fire escape be reconstructed to city code specifications, verified by an inspection from the Codes Bureau and our city engineer's office. The applicant has received approval from the Harrisburg Architectural Review Board, which is Harb, and Law Bureau, and the city's engineer's office. All the necessary approvals have been met by the applicant, and I would ask that my colleagues vote in affirmative for this project that has been longstanding for the last couple of years. Moving on to Resolution 69. Resolution 69 is a resolution approving the preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Brad Jones, President of River and Pine LLC, to convert an existing office building located at 116 Pine Street into a 45-unit apartment building with retail space on the first floor. Mr. Brad Jones is the chairman of Harris Town, as well as the president of his own corporation, and has addressed this council in both capacities for the submission of plans of several projects within the Harrisburg downtown area to renovate office buildings into apartment units. As the council president, I appreciate encourage development-- developers to invest in the city of Harrisburg, to revitalize the downtown area and bring positive impact to this area. Again, my concern is the need for inclusion of low-income housing for our residents in their planning and development stage. Council members have stated that it is our responsibility to enact an ordinance or amendment to address this issue. With the approval of Bill 9 Amendment regarding the zoning variance for density, that would be the solution. It is estimated that the cost of the project would be around $6 million. The value of 45 apartment units at $1,100 a month for one-bedroom rental would gross $5 million the first year, and two-bedroom rental at $7 million that year, more than enough by the second year to receive a higher return on this investment and pay off the entire project with the inclusion of low income. I ask my city council members to please vote with me in affirmative for the amendment. And that is the conclusion of Mr. Madison's Community Economic Development. Moving on to report from Chair Johnson on the work session of June 20, 2018.
All right. The Building and Housing Committee met on June 20 to discuss three pieces of legislation. First legislation was Resolution 54, 2018, which is a resolution ratifying a lease agreement with the Keystone Government Finance Incorporated for the purpose of financing a storage area network and five Cisco servers. We heard testimony from Mr. Border, who is our IT Director, in regards to these SAN units. We basically received a proposal from key government finance for an amount of $172,493 for five Cisco-- for SAN-- for the lease purchase of a SAN and five Cisco servers. And we have at least-- we're looking to execute a lease purchase agreement, which will last about three years with an interest rate at 4.45%. So as everyone know, we have been over time improving our IT to make sure we're able to provide the necessary services internally, as well as externally. So I recommend my colleagues to support this legislation. Resolution 55, basically discussed-- was a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into an agreement of sale with the General Service Administration for real property located at 648 and 650 Boyd Street, Harrisburg, PA, in lieu of imminent domain proceedings. As everyone may be aware, the federal courthouse just broke ground yesterday, and these properties are attached to what the federal government is looking to purchase in regards to completing this project. They're looking to offer the city $39,000, which is fair market value to purchase these projects-- I mean, these properties. And basically, if we don't sell these properties to the federal government, they would basically do eminent domain to acquire these properties in order to complete the project. So we're looking to sell off these two properties. It was a while back that we acquired these properties for a little bit over-- I think it was a little bit over $30,000. So we are actually are making a profit, per se. But I would support my colleagues to support this legislation, so we can get this project moving. Resolution 60 is a resolution basically discussing and asking the city to authorize the city of Harrisburg to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Central Pennsylvania Building and Construction Trades Council, AFL-CIO, in support of cooperation to assure property-trained and skilled workers shall be available for certain future major public construction projects. So we heard testimony from Mr. Roy Chris. This is-- this legislation-- this resolution actually was revived after our first round of applying for a TIGR grant. The city is looking to anticipate to apply for a build grant in the future. And based upon if the city was awarded this grant, we would require the access to services of experienced trade laborers in various building and construction trades to timely complete the project. And in anticipation of the grant award, we are basically would enter into an MOU with the AFL-CIO to make sure-- to assure that adequately trained labor force is available in the area to provide timely services of projects. So basically, this grant award would necessitate the city to retain a qualified independent entity to study whether the city should secure a project labor stabilization agreement to efficiently carry out the build grant projects. As people may know, we applied in the past for a TIGR grant for a project to build a bridge over the railroad tracks connecting Division Street to our Hackwild Campus. So in the future, we are looking to possibly apply for a build grant. So if we were to be awarded a build grant, we would look to actually going to have this project-- the study completed, to see if the city would be interested in doing a project labor stabilization agreement with AFL-CIO and other unions. And I would recommend my colleagues to support this legislation as well. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And let me just make sure that the public understands that Bill Number 9 revising the density restrictions is not on the agenda for a vote tonight. We are having a public hearing on July 3 before the legislative session. So that if you would like to attend, please come before 5:30 or 6 o'clock. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance for first reading we have done tonight. Moving on to ordinance for amendment. Bill 4, 2018.
Bill 4 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Mr. Madison. It's an ordinance amending Part 5 of Title II of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Harrisburg, entitled Environmental Advisory Council to Establish the Terms and Services of the Process for Appointing the Initial Succeeding Members of the Reorganized Environmental Advisory Council to Increase the Number of Members of the EAC and to Permit the Participation of Non-Voting City Personnel and Officials in EAC Board Matters.
Mr. Majors.
I would ask that we table the bill until our July 3 meeting to give us time to receive information from the city solicitor with respect to how-- who has the proper appointing authority to the EAC.
Okay. We have a table. Please call the vote.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, seconded, you're right. Mr. Johnson, you seconded?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to take a 15-minute recess. And pardon me? Recession to caucus, yes. And we will come back to move on the ordinance for amendment. Good evening, we're back in recess. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, Bill 6 of 2018. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Yeah, Bill 6 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madison, seconded by Ms. Green, to an ordinance appropriating community development block grant funds from the United States Department of Housing Development for fiscal year 2018, and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Mr. Madison?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to the proposed bill. I'd like to make a-- I'd like to make a reduction to $5,000 from TLC, $5,000 from CRAM, $5,000 from Shades of Greatness, and $5,000 from the Heinz.
Wait, I think that's not what it says.
Go ahead.
Okay. And then I'm proposing for an addition of $20,000 to Breaking the Chains.
Can you say it again?
Yes.
I start to crack. Am I right? That's not what you said.
So this is...
We're supposed to take action on what he's...
Yes.
First, I want to ask for just a point of order from the council.
Yes.
If you could restate that motion in the form of the line item, the line number, everyone in the ordinance, and what you're taking it from and taking it to.
Yes. Okay, but wait a minute.
The grant would be line 40, from 40 to 35, but if each is O, just so it's on the record that way.
Well, wait a minute, Mr. Mattson, I don't think that's, I don't think you have the correct things. Hold on.
There's also not a second for the motion, so the question is...
Okay. Right, right. Yes, withdraw the motion.
Yeah, I withdraw the motion.
Please.
Because there was not a second.
Do you have it up?
I have it up.
Okay. Okay. correct information. Thank you.
Your motion is going to recess, ma'am.
I'm sorry. May I have a motion to go into recess, please? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Recession. Can I have a motion to go back into session, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
We're back in motion, City Council Legislative Session. Moving on to Bill 6, Mr. Mattson.
Yes. I want to apologize to my colleagues and the applicants. A few different drafts of the amendments got passed around, and I read from the wrong note sheet, but we got it fixed now, so. Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to amend Bill Number 6, 2018, as follows.
May I have a second?
He needs to state.
Oh, state, I'm sorry, go ahead. You just got me crazy today over here. Go ahead, Mr. Mattson.
So TLC, line 48, will be a reduction of $45,000 to $30,000. And then I would like to propose, in addition to the Public Service Activity Section, to include Breaking the Chains for an appropriation of $15,000. That's it.
Okay. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Please call the vote on the amendment. On discussion, any discussion on the motion?
So, as you guys know, CDBG is a time of the year where we have very, very qualified and great organizations throughout the city of Harrisburg apply for this limited amount of funding. Every year, the federal government allows this funding. We have, everyone knows everything about the debt that we have to pay with this funding, and as the amount that we have to actually award to organizations decrease, we have to make tougher and tougher decisions. And over the years, it's always been some type of process of how these funds are awarded to our different recipients. I felt like this year, in comparison to the first two years of going through this process, I think it was the first time that we provided our applicants a clear path of how decisions were determined. We had a panel who went through applications. Things were the most transparent I have seen in regards to this process. The administration made some recommendations. We heard testimony from the different applicants, which all projects are great projects and are needed within the city of Harrisburg. The amendments, I would be voting no on, just due to the fact of, one, I think it goes against the process which was set forth towards the applicants, of saying these are our criteria that we're looking at. And I know in the past that council does have final say on what these allocations will be, but I think within our process, we should be transparent and be able to justify why, you know, we make our changes. And I'm not saying no because I don't believe the funding, the applicants that we're looking to fund, it's not a worthy applicant. I believe they do great work. I believe their work is phenomenal inside the city. I just believe within us holding to true to a process and setting clear expectations with a competitive grant process. So I will be voting no for this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other discussion on the motion, please? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The amendment carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill 6. Bill 6, the final vote.
Or go down to the final passage?
Right. Ordinance of final passage. Bill 4, we've tabled that, so we will not be discussing that for final passage. Moving on to Bill 5 of 2018. Mr. Petroski, read that into record, please.
Madam Chair, point of order, we've discussed at the caucus the need to review and vote upon the resolution for the five-year plan.
But we're going to do it at the end. We're going to do that at the end.
Ahead of the three bills.
Yes. Yes, we're going to do Resolution 64. Okay? I asked you if there was necessary for us to do Resolution 64.
And I believe my answer was yes.
You said, "As long as we vote on it tonight at the legislative session." Now, we were going to do Resolution 64 at the end, but we can, we can go on to, for final passage. Have a motion to bring up Resolution 64 from the floor, please?
Yes. A motion to bring up Resolution 64 from the floor.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the resolution?
Yeah, should we just...
Would you read that into record, please?
Yeah. Resolution 64 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program, CDVG Home Investment Partnership Program, Home and Emergency Solutions Grant Program, ESG, along with the fiscal year 2018, 2022, Five-Year Strategic Plan, and First Annual Action Plan.
Okay. Any discussion on the resolution, on the motion? Hearing none, please call the vote.
This will be the vote to bring it from the floor.
Yes.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Move and to vote on Resolution 64?
Calling the vote for Resolution 64 of 2018. Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 64 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill 5 of 2018.
Bill 5 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Green. It's an ordinance appropriating emergency solutions grant program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2018 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Any discussion on Bill 5? No questions? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 5 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill 6.
Bill 6 of 2018, as amended, was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Green. It's an ordinance appropriating community development block grant funds from the United States Department of Housing Development for fiscal year 2018 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Any questions or comments on the bill? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 6, as amended, passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill 7.
Bill 7 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Green. It's an ordinance appropriating Home Investment Partnership Program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2018 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Any questions or comments on Bill 7? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 52 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 54.
Resolution 54 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a 902 Recycling Grant application to the Department of, to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of funding equipment to support the city of Harrisburg's expanding recycling programs.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 52 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 55.
Resolution 55 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into agreement of sale with the General Services Administration for real property located at 648 and 650 Boyd Street, Harrisburg, PA, in lieu of imminent domain proceedings.
Any questions or comment on 55? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 55 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 57.
Resolution 57 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Major, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution affirming the city of Harrisburg's participation in the Sustainable Pennsylvania Community Certification Program.
Are there any questions or comment on Resolution 57? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 55 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 57.
Resolution 57 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Major, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution affirming the city of Harrisburg's participation in the Sustainable Pennsylvania Community Certification Program.
Are there any questions or comment on Resolution 57? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 57 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 58.
Resolution 58 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Major, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate, enter into professional service contract with Chris Dawson, architect, to provide architectural service for master planning, as well as Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA accessible upgrades, and other renovations to Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Government Center.
Any questions or comments, council members, on 58? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 58 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 59.
Resolution 59 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Major, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a federal reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for acceptance of the transportation alternatives program, tap funding for the Hur Street Pedestrian Access Route Project.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 59? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 59 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 60.
Resolution 60 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Central Pennsylvania Building and Construction Trades, AFL-CIO, in support of cooperation to assure properly-trained and skilled workers shall be available for certain future major public construction projects.
Any questions and comments on Resolution 60? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 60 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 61.
Resolution 61 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution to enter into a master service agreement with Barton-Laguidis DPC for engineering technical assistance and consulting services for the various projects supporting the Department of Public Works.
Any questions or comments on 61? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 61 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 66.
Resolution 66 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the preliminary, final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Joe Davidson on behalf of Executive House Apartments to convert existing commercial space on the first floor of 101 South Second Street into 15 apartment units.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?[1555.23]
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-six passes.
Thank you, moving on to Resolution sixty-seven.
Resolution sixty-seven of two thousand and eighteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Johnson, it's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into an easement agreement with Los Tras Cabanas Incorporated for the purpose of installing a fire escape connected the rear second floor, five forty Ray Street, to public right-of-way sidewalk on Canoye Street.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-seven passes.
Moving on to Resolution sixty-nine.
Resolution sixty-nine of two thousand and eighteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allot, it's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Brad Jones, President of River and Pine LLC, to convert an existing office building located at one sixteen Pine Street into a forty-five unit apartment building with retail space on the first floor.
Any questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Resolution sixty-nine passes.
Thank you, moving on to Resolution seventy. Oh, that's right, we pulled it, I'm sorry, we pulled it, I have it on my, thank you, moving on to O Business, council members, are there any O Business? Mr. Majors?
First, I want to publicly thank all the residents that participated in public hearings over the past six weeks that we had on the sanitation ordinance, Bill Three of two thousand and eighteen, we received a, probably had over, over hundreds of residents come out to the three different meetings to provide feedback to the administration, Public Works, and City Council on, on the proposed sanitation ordinance. As the public knows, there are a few items in there that raised a lot of concerns for city residents. The one that we heard the most feedback about was the proposal to move to an annual billing system. Residents had concerns that this could potentially put their, their homes or their properties at risk due to them, their billing being tied to their property taxes. The other issue that came up quite a bit in public meetings was our intent on not requiring vacant lots to receive a trash bill. So, just wanted to let the public know that it is city councils, well, I won't speak for council, it is my intent at our next meeting where we plan to bring this up for a vote, to offer amendments, to take the annual billing piece out, right now, I think that there are a lot of legitimate concerns that were raised at the public meetings to, that really raised some concerns, and, and I had a lot of questions, and I'm still looking for, looking to have some dialogue about those. So, I'm looking at removing that from the ordinance, so we can really focus on the fine, increasing fines, fees, and penalties for illegal dumping in the city of Harrisburg, ensuring that folks are adhering to our ordinance, and making sure that all property owners are paying for their fair share of trash collection in the city of Harrisburg. In addition, looking at making an amendment to require vacant property or vacant lot owners to ensure that they certify that their property is vacant, I think right now, there's language in the bill that would almost make Public Works in charge of ensuring that, identifying a vacant property, and then ensuring that the property is vacant. For me, if we're looking to reduce a liability, or a, reduce a, a charge to a property owner, I would want that property owner to certify with the city of Harrisburg that, that property is indeed vacant, a vacant, you know, building, a vacant lot, so that it eases the burden on our Public Works folks that are already doing yeoman's work in the city of Harrisburg, I know, you know, we had a lot of folks that, although they had some questions and concerns, all spoke very highly of our, and I, and I do, and all members of council do speak very highly of our Public Works Department, you guys do a great job, and we just want to ensure that, that if you're a property owner, you want, if we're looking to, you know, we've heard countless times that I'm a property owner, I don't know why I'm still, it's a vacant lot, and I don't know why I'm still receiving a trash bill, if you do not want to receive a trash bill, that you are self-certifying to the city of Harrisburg, we have information about the, the property owner, to make sure that, okay, that if said property owner truly is, said property truly is vacant, we know who that property owner is, so. I just wanted to make that statement publicly, and as well as acknowledge all the great feedback and input that we did receive from the residents and property owners in the city of Harrisburg during those three meetings, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors, anyone else? Mr. Mattson?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate all the recipients of the CDBG grant monies, and the DBHD folks will be in touch with the recipients to talk about next steps, and then...
You don't have to, they can be attached with that.
Yeah, and then they'll be in touch with the, the amounts received, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? I have two announcements. On the O Business, O Business, okay? As most of the residents in Harrisburg are aware, there was a ceremony groundbreaking for the new federal courthouse at Sixth and Rowley Streets on Monday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. I attended, along with my colleagues, Councilman Johnson and Vice President Allot. As elected officials for the city of Harrisburg, where the planned courthouse is being built, protocol should have been the inclusion to acknowledge those elected city officials who were present, we were not even given that respect. I would like to take this opportunity now, though, to publicly thank my colleagues for attending the meetings for the courthouse, as well as others. The former councilwoman, Susan Brown Wilson, who was very active, former president of City Council, Gloria Martin Roberts, former mayors, Linda Thompson and Stephen Reed, and former director of constituent services for Senator Rob Teplitz, Brian Humphreys, for their diligent community service by meeting with our entire community many times to gain their input that has led to our capital city gaining this federal courthouse, and I thought it was appropriate that I take the time to thank all those individuals. Moving on to new business, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I know everyone's been watching the news, and have seen the events in Pittsburgh in regards to a seventeen-year-old unarmed, black young man by the name of Antoine Rose, who was murdered by a police officer on June nineteenth in East Pittsburgh Borough. It's really has become, as everyone knows, if you're following the trend of news, it's, it's a trending thing, it happens at least once a month, where we see someone who looks just like me, probably my age or younger, are, are being gunned down inside the streets, and I think a lot of times, you know, anytime someone gives these statements, we always have to kind of press it, press it, press it with the statement of kind of saying like, hey, you know, you know, it's not a reflection of like, you know, all police officers and police departments, and that is true, but a lot of time, I think that takes away from the incidents that are occurring. So, I think people have to respect that from the argument of kind of seeing that, you know, these things are happening, and these things are constantly happening, you know, throughout our communities, and, you know, the reaction that we're seeing from our neighboring, our neighboring city in Pittsburgh, you know, it's just a consequence of us as a state and as a nation, not being able to really bring about the proper resources when things happen. We have seen numbers of times, whether if it's someone who is, you know, at a police stop, you know, someone who, as we have seen little boys who have been in playgrounds, Tamir Rice in Ohio, who was gunned down for just being a young black man in a playground, so I thought it was important to kind of mention it, because I think what happens in Pittsburgh, you know, could potentially happen in Harrisburg, can potentially happen in Philadelphia, can potentially happen in any city across America, and I think, you know, we have to call it, you know, for what it is, and, you know, while we do, you know, support our men in blue, I'm also in support of, of our young black males who are in the street, who are, who are dying as a result of these incidents, so. I personally know people who are direct family members from the Pittsburgh area of Antoine Rose, so this was a, a young black man who was, who was educated, who you will talk to his teachers, who said he was on a bright future, it just so happened that, you know, he was, you know, part of something that maybe, you know, in hindsight, that he should have never probably been in that car to begin with, but in result, I don't think it deserved of him being dead, in result of people mourning for him, I don't think it resulted where we have to see, you know, our brothers and sisters protesting in the street for another, you know, in my opinion, unjust killing. So, I just wanted to kind of circle it home, I know it's a lot of people inside our, inside Harrisburg are talking about this topic, and it's a growing conversation, but I don't think it should be a conversation that we should be scared to have, and it's something that we, we as, you know, politicians, or any type of public officials, or any type of community leaders, should embrace this conversation, because that's what brings about true change, so I wanted to, you know, use my platform to kind of bring attention to Antoine Rose, and make him be remembered for the positive black man that he was before he was murdered, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, any other new business? I have an announcement from the American Legion. On July fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, they will be conducting a hundredth anniversary parade, and that parade is going to be in Harrisburg, and will be filled with your nation's heroes, military vehicles, bands, firefighters, and much more. It will be celebrated at the Riverfront Park. The streets will be closed during the week from nine AM to nine PM, and any questions should be directed to Mr. Richard Morgan at eight one four seven three oh oh nine four one. Many thanks in advance for your cooperation, we hope to see you in attendance on July fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to commemorate this special, this special occasion for a hundredth year anniversary of the American Legion. And that's all I have, is any other new business? Any other announcements? Ms. Daniels?
Yes, before this, we recess for the, for the summer, I just wanted to let Harrisburg residents know that this August ninth, beginning, beginning at five thirty, there will be a free viewing, again, this year, or the annual free viewing of a movie, The Rape of Racy Taylor, followed by a panel discussion on the high rates of sexual assault for women of color. The, the panel discussion will be moderated by Nell McCormack-Abom, and we'll have like, really great, informed panelists, so if you could, just pay attention, the movie is free, and the request is if you are able to, to contribute pads and tampons that go to homeless women in Harrisburg.
Okay, anyone else, Mr. Majors?
Yes, well, first, I just want to start off by echoing the sentiments of Councilman Johnson, and also wanted to acknowledge our African-American women, and Latino, and all people of color that are sometimes unjustfully gunned down by the police, but after that, additionally, there are two upcoming public meetings that the city of Harrisburg is holding of utmost importance, the first being the State Street Safety Project, that'll be tomorrow, June twenty-seventh, from five to seven, at the Harrisburg Fire Station, you know, we've been dealing with a lot of safety issues in the city of Harrisburg, specifically on State Street, so I would encourage the public to attend that meeting, as well as, there'll be a meeting on June twenty-eighth about the Motor Square enhancements from, at seven PM on Thursday, June twenty-eighth, and that'll be held at First Church of the Brethren, located at two nineteen Hummel Street, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, have a motion to adjourn? May I have a second?
Second.
Meeting's adjourned.